Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to tonight's regularly scheduled city council meeting. The meeting is called to order. I kindly ask our acting city clerk, the deputy clerk, Ms. Dawkins, to please take the roll call.
Bruno?
Here.
Burghart, Clemens, Ruby?
Here.
Kilburg?
Here.
Maladra?
Here.
Marx?
Here.
McGowan?
Radecki?
Here.
Swanson?
Here. We are called to order, and I would like to begin the meeting with a pledge of allegiance and ask our special guest, Mr. George Stazen, to please lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Now, sir, if Mr. Collins is prepared back there to flash a photo on the screen, but I'd like to begin tonight's meeting with a shout-out to a young man named Tyson Rich. Tyson Rich is going to be in third grade at Heartland Elementary School. If you take a look at that photo on the screen, this is the culmination of Tyson's passion for fishing. Last year, Tyson asked his mom and dad if he could start a fishing club in Geneva. They live in the Fisher Farms neighborhood. Behind their home is this beautiful pond that is obviously well-fed. There are 41 registered fishermen and fisherwomen in this club. They have four outings a year in June, July, August, and September. And yesterday, Amy and I had the pleasure of hanging out with Tyson and all his buddies while they fished and caught fish. It's a catch-and-release, so that's good, in virtually their backyard. They begin the day with some educational materials, they do a craft, and then they spend the second hour of the day fishing. So, to Tyson and all his friends, thank you for the warm reception, and thank you for the extraordinarily fun afternoon, which otherwise would've been a boring Sunday. So, thank you very much.
It was an uncomfortable day.
Yeah, it was. It was lovely. It was lovely. And he sells all the extra to Little Owl for Lent. You understand that, Mike? Item 3A, folks, is "Consider a Proclamation Celebrating Youth Outlook's 20th Anniversary." My friend, Mr. George Miller, is with us. Mr. Miller, come on up to the podium. George, we go way back, don't we?
Yes.
Yes, we do. And I had the pleasure of attending one of your events recently at the UU Church. And you spoke passionately about the good work that Youth Outlook does, how impactful that work has been for two decades, and quite frankly, how a lot of folks don't know still about the extraordinary work you do. So, I'd love to provide you the opportunity to share with all of us and those tuning in.
Great. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to do that. I hope everybody can hear me from here.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
My name is George Miller. I'm a board member at Youth Outlook. I'm also a retired high school teacher who first learned about the work that Youth Outlook does through two of my students who greatly benefited from this work. For the last 20 years, and at least part of that time, we've been kitty-corner from here at the Unitarian Universalist Church, working with at-risk lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender youth who often have no other place to go. We provide resources, we provide a sense of community, we provide support for families, and a lot of the work we do is in suicide prevention, because we get many referrals from inpatient and outpatient adolescent centers. We've been very pleased with the support we've had in this community and also other communities. We currently are working between, in the western suburbs and out into the countryside. Farthest east is Naperville, farthest west is Sterling. So, we have a lot going on, and we just are working with five more communities that would like to work with us. So, we're very excited about the opportunities for young people. We're concerned that there's still a need, but there is a need, and we work to provide that. So, I'm honored to be here tonight and receive this recognition.
Are there any questions or comments from the council for Mr. Miller? Alderman Bruno?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a comment. On the 20th anniversary, that's impressive, and it's, the landscape has so changed for the better over those 20 years. Obviously, there's a lot, not nearly at the finish line, but it's, I appreciate your work and the support that you provide.
Yeah, thank you. A lot of people think, "Well, there's marriage equality, and it's done," but there's still a lot more to do. But, thank you.
Now, Mr. Miller, what subject do you teach?
I was in the business department. I taught marketing and sales and work experience programs and computers and a number of things related to that. I did that for 33 years.
Wow. So, you're not really retired, are you?
No. In fact, after I retired, I took a little time off, and I crossed paths with the Youth Outlook Executive Director, and after we talked, he said, "George, you'd be a good board member." I thought, "Oh, dear. What am I getting involved with?" But, it's been very exciting work, and I'm glad to be a cog in this wheel.
That's wonderful. Anyone else on the dais? Would anyone object if I read the proclamation? Mr. Miller, the proclamation reads, "A proclamation celebrating Youth Outlook. Whereas the rate of homelessness and suicide is disproportionately high in the United States amongst LGBTQ-plus youth, many of whom are vulnerable because of feelings of isolation, fear, and whereas Naperville-based Youth Outlook is the first social service agency in Illinois dedicated to supporting LGBTQ-plus youth in six counties of northern Illinois, including Kane, and whereas the organization is run by a board of directors and staffed by a handful of dedicated professionals, as well as nearly 100 trained volunteers and college interns to deliver vital programs, and whereas Youth Outlook has served thousands of young people from the Chicago-Lincoln area at several drop-in centers, including the Unitarian Universalist Society of Geneva at 102 South Second Street, by providing a safe environment for LGBTQ-plus youth to be themselves in the company of their peers. And whereas Youth Outlook works closely with various community groups, businesses, mental health professionals, and Gay-Straight Alliance Clubs at area schools, and whereas Youth Outlook has been recognized by the Human Rights Campaign for Excellence in Service to young people, and whereas Youth Outlook celebrates its 20th anniversary by helping at-risk youth in our communities, I, Kevin Burns, Mayor of the City of Geneva, do hereby sign this official proclamation recognizing Youth Outlook's 20th anniversary and its positive impact upon our community."
Thank you very much.
And will entertain a motion to so proclaim? Alderman Marx makes the motion. Alderman Swanson makes the second. Any additional questions or comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Mr. Miller?
Thank you very much. I really appreciate it, sir. Yes, I appreciate you coming by the other day. It was awesome. Thank you. But, again, I'm honored and humbled by this recognition, and we are very happy for the support we've received in Geneva and many of our other communities. So, thank you again, and thank you again. Good evening.
And George, because you're retired, I'm sure your schedule's busier than all, you know what, so if you need to sneak out, please.
I appreciate that, because I am busier now than I can be. Have a good evening, folks.
Thank you, sir. Item 3B is "Consider the Mayor's Appointments of Mr. David Warner and George Stazen to the Historic Preservation Commission." Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Alderman Bruno?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Marx. Mr. Warner is traveling, but Mr. Stazen is with us this evening. George, could I invite you up to the podium?
Please. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thanks again for leading us in the pledge, and thank you again for what I assume will be a successful nomination to your candidacy. All of the council members have a copy of the information you submitted with respect to your interest in serving. Is there anything else you'd like to share with us about your desire and passion of not only historic preservation, but of course, the community overall?
Well, pretty much, it's all on my resume and application, but my passion over the years, working with the YMCA for 37 years, was really, even though we developed many new properties, the bulk of our holdings in any typical community were between 1910 and 1935, in the Carnegie era. So, I was involved in a lot of historic preservation and adaptive reuse in pretty much cities all over the US. I was on the other side of the table, working with committees and municipalities, but my real interest lies in the older stuff, not necessarily the new. And as you see from my application, spending 25 years in Jerusalem, in a city that's 3,000 years old, on a 1920s building that was done by Harmon, who did the Empire State Building, and dedicated by Kitchener in the 20s, my passion even grew for preserving as much as we possibly can, but in a practical sense, that it has to be useful and well-serving the community, as well as keeping with the traditions that were established by its historic nature.
Well said. Questions or comments for Mr. Stazen? By any chance, did you know a gentleman named Mr. Stecker at YMCA?
I don't believe so.
He was there for about 40-some-odd years.
Okay.
Finally retired to Wisconsin, believe it or not.
Okay. Where was, where was?
He was all over the United States and all over the world as well, but similar role to yours, in fact.
Okay.
Yeah, I worked with his son at, with Jerry Lewis.
Oh.
And his father was a veteran of the YMCA, so you guys lived long and prosperous lives.
Well, now, I spend more time in a golf cart than I do on an airplane, but no complaints.
Is it a historically significant golf cart, or is it just?
Eagle Brook. I'm on the 16th green.
Ah, life was good.
For the last 18 years.
Wow.
I think you might have a couple of them golf balls.
Yeah.
Ladies and gentlemen, if there's no other questions, we do have a motion, and we do have a second. A voice vote is sufficient. All those in favor of approving Mr. Warner and our friend, Mr. Stazen, who's with us this evening, to serve on the Historic Preservation Commission, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Your first check will be in the mail, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, George. Item 3C is "The Community Development Department Presentation." We have none other but our friend, Mr. David DeGroot, the Director of Community Development, with us this evening. Mr. DeGroot?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
I think we've been doing these presentations for eight years, maybe, and in that time, we've tried to touch on what we look at as like our core functions as a community development department, in the building and zoning division and in the planning division. Last year, we presented on property maintenance and code enforcement, and that kind of took us through the cycle of those core functions. So, at some point, we'll probably go back and touch base on some of these, but tonight, we wanted to focus on some of the work we're doing in the realm of public outreach and education, kind of related to some of our core functions, but work that we've been working, trying really hard to kind of go above and beyond with, and work that we're proud of. The first is our development project notifications. This should be a familiar topic. Two years ago, we were operating under the state's minimum requirements for notice of public hearings, whether that's before the Plan Commission, Zoning Board of Appeals, or Historic Preservation Commission. Those requirements are that with no less than 15 days, but no more than 30 days before a public hearing, you have to publish notice in the paper, and you have to mail a notice to property owners within 250 feet of the subject property. I apologize for the screen blinking. We tried to fix it this afternoon. It's what it is. That kind of minimal notice requirement raised concerns in the community. We had some discussion at a strategic planning session with the council, and then last year adopted amendments that increased that notice requirement. So, now, notices mailed to all property owners within 500 feet instead of 250, and we mail a notice within five days of receiving a complete application. So, that gives property owners more time to review an application, ask questions, develop arguments for or against the petition. And then, we also send out that second notice 15 days, at least 15 days prior to the public hearing, again, to property owners within 500 feet. In addition to that, we ordered new public hearing signs. We had kind of a minimal public hearing sign that's really all it said, and it was rather small. So, we increased the size of those signs, and we included a box where we could put takeaway notices in the box for people walking by or driving by to stop and take that notice and learn more about the project. Those often include pictures on the back to give you an idea of what's being proposed. Both the takeaway notice and the mail notice include the language that you see on the screen here, really trying to encourage people to visit the city's website, sign up for email alerts related to the projects, and look at our Development Projects map for more information. So, kind of trying to bridge the old-school notice with the new school. I know all of you are familiar with the Development Projects map, but we added some new features that I just want to highlight this evening, that I think make it a little more user-friendly and provide more information. So, when you go to the Development Projects page, you have an interactive map that you can drag around, select a piece of property, and learn who the applicant is, what the address is, what word it's in, what the request is, and then what the current status is, whether it's scheduled for a hearing or not. The new feature is that there's now a link for more information. You click on that, and it takes you to a project-specific webpage, which again, gives you an overview, but it also gives you all the related documents that were filed with the application. So, the application's now available online. For anybody that's visiting the site, you could pull up the elevations or landscape plans, whatever you're interested in. Webpage also gives you the appropriate contact information on the right-hand side, so whoever the liaison is. For Plan Commission, it's Paul. Historic Preservation Commission, it's Michael. And ZBA, it's Eric. So, that's, those are the new features there. You don't have to sign up to visit this webpage. I'm trying to get back to the homepage here. Yeah, there it goes. But, you can sign up through NotifyMe. You just go to NotifyMe, enter your email address, and then select what notifications you want to receive. Development Projects is one of those. So, anytime that map is updated with a status update on a project or a new project is added, you'll receive an email alert with a link to the map and a summary of what that update is. Through NotifyMe, you can also sign up for notifications to the Agenda Center, so Plan Commission Agendas, Historic Preservation Commission Agendas, or ZBA Agendas. In that Agenda Center, similar to the city council packets and committee of the whole packets, we try to get them out as early as possible. Open Meetings Act requires at least 48 hours' notice, but we strive to get them up at least a week ahead of time. And then, we try to post more than just the agenda, which is again, the minimum requirement. We try to post the whole packet, and in a booklet form where you can kind of easily navigate what's on the agenda and see the full detail of the applications being considered. So, that's kind of the Development Projects update that I wanted to provide. Any questions on that before I move on? Sure.
I was just curious with the takeaway notices. Is there a typical amount that you put in the box? Like, how many of those are people actually picking up? Are you refilling it?
We are refilling them when we notice that they're empty. We typically print out about 25, and oftentimes, we have to refill it.
Okay.
Not always. It depends on the project.
Sure.
But, we do refill them if they're empty, and if you notice, please let us know, and we'll get somewhere out there.
Okay. Thanks.
Alderman Bruno, then Alderman Maladra.
Thank you, David. I've gotten some excellent feedback on your improved notifications with the maps. In particular, the NotifyMe where you actually key in summaries of those agenda items, which probably works well for Plan Commission with a few number of items, but we are limited, I think, as to how much text we can enter into those emails. But, like I said, excellent feedback on those updates, so thanks.
Thank you.
Alderman Maladra.
So, on the development map and the development webpage, could you include some indication of timing? So, like I was just looking at the Dunkin' Donuts. You say it's in first review, but there's no indication about when it comes out and what the next steps would be. So, I think it would be useful for people to know about, you know, how long it's going to be under review or whatever.
That end is a bit tricky, because we will deliver our first set of review comments, and then it's really on the applicant's court to return a submittal to the city. Sometimes, that can be months, if they're debating on whether or not to move forward with the project, or depending on how much they have going on. So, that's why we just say "under review," and then if there is an update, you can sign up through NotifyMe, and you'll be notified when a second submittal is received, and then we'll post that on the website, too.
Thanks.
Anyone else on this matter?
Something else that we've launched recently is customer service surveys. So, following up with applicants that go through the Plan Commission process, Historic Preservation Commission process, or Zoning Board of Appeals process, I think oftentimes, some of the feedback that, or most of the time, the feedback that we were receiving was indirect. So, we wanted to reach out to applicants directly and ask them to give us a fair assessment. So, we developed a survey that we emailed to them after final action has been taken, and it's anonymous, so they can speak their minds freely and then return them to us. We tried to make it user-friendly, so we just provide a link and, you know, give them a quick selection on a few questions, whether or not we're explaining the application requirements and review procedures clearly. We're answering their questions. We're accessible. We're giving pertinent advice, demonstrating our professional expertise, giving our review comments or responses in a timely manner, being courteous throughout the process, and then just an overall rating of our customer service, and then, of course, the, whatever other feedback you want to provide us, what you like, what you don't like about the process. Say, it's been a few months since we've launched this, and we've got about 100 surveys emailed out through the three different commissions, and we've got about a 30% response rate, which is pretty good for an external survey. And so far, the feedback's been pretty good. We've had a few that, I think, probably had a rough time on the final verdict, maybe, but overall, very positive feedback, and it's just good to understand what we're doing well and what we can improve on. And then, the last thing that we have spent some time on is what we're calling a Five-Minute Field Guide. It's been a goal of the Planning Division for a while to prepare more informational materials and conduct educational programs on historic preservation topics that had been difficult to do back when that position was part-time, but now that it's been restored to full-time, we've found some time to develop this program. I want to give Michael Lambert a lot of credit. He was not able to be here tonight, but he really came up with this concept of a Five-Minute Field Guide, which would be a very focused, short presentation to the Historic Preservation Commission on a routine basis. So, so far, we've been able to do it for the last three months. Hopefully, we can keep up with that pace. And these are the topics that we've covered so far, just basic building identification, glass-shaping architecture, and then evaluating windows. Here are just a few slides from the first one, on helping people understand, you know, what a bay of windows is, what a transom around a doorway is, differences between different types of windows, or hips roofers, the gable roof, just very basic concepts. Not everybody on the commission is an architect or understands the terms that are used routinely, so just getting them to have a resource that they can go to. To that end, we were trying to figure out a way to make this something that can live beyond the meeting where it's presented. So, we developed a voiceover basically of the PowerPoint presentation, and then linked it to the city's website, so you can now go online and watch that presentation. So, it'll be a good resource for current commissioners, future commissioners, the council, should an appeal come to the council, or just the public in general should start playing.
Five-Minute Field Guide presented by...
We'll play the whole thing, which will give you a taste of...
...the Geneva Historic Preservation Commission. This installment, Glass-Shaping Architecture. As the Historic Preservation Commission, we typically focus on the style, operation, and materials that compose a window. We rarely spend a great deal of time discussing the attributes of the glass itself. In many windows with clear glass, the significance of the glazing is easily understood. However, in some cases, the glazing details are the significant detail of the window unit because of the functional purpose, artistic design, interior aesthetics, or combination of all. The design and placement of windows is typically related to the building use, function, aesthetics, and desire to control natural light and views. In architectural design of all eras, regardless of the window type...
If you want to watch the whole thing, it's available on the city's website. We're going to continue to do the voiceovers for the other two presentations and get those loaded up on the website, too, and then hopefully have a catalog that can be a good resource for the community on historic preservation topics going forward. So, that's really it. I just kind of wanted to highlight some of those items that we're working on, and I forgot to pause for questions on the customer service surveys, but any questions on either one of those topics?
Questions or comments for Mr. DeGroot from the dais, or Alderman Bruno?
Thank you, Mayor. This is the first I learned about the Five-Minute Field Guide. That sounds valuable for commissioners, but I think it sounds like it could be very useful for the general public, too, if they're not really understanding, you know, what the commission's going to be looking at. So, I'm looking forward to seeing more of those out there. Thanks.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, sir.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks very much. And I love the sepia-tone Dyna Shore look on the screen. That's awesome. For the older people, the audience. Mike Douglas. Phil Donahue. Item four, folks, amendments to the agenda. Are there any amendments this evening? Item five is the Omnibus Agenda. All items marked with an asterisk are considered to be routine by this council, and they can be considered and acted upon with one motion. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Alderman Bruno makes the motion on the consent agenda. Alderman Marx makes the second. Any questions or comments on those items marked consent? Hearing none, seeing none. Acting clerk, please take the roll call.
Bruno?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Radecki?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion carries of seven affirmative votes and three absent. Item 9A, folks, is to recommend acceptance of fiscal year 2019 First Quarter Goals Status Report. Is there a motion to accept that report as presented? Alderman Maladra makes the motion. Alderman Ruby makes the second. Any questions or comments regarding the report? Seeing none, hearing none, a voice vote is sufficient. All in favor of accepting the report as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries with seven affirmative votes and three absent. Item 10, municipal bills for payment. We kindly ask our deputy clerk to please read the bills in their aggregate for our consideration this evening.
Municipal bills for payment total $1,271,620.37.
Mayor, I move that we approve and pay the bills as read. The individual items that add up to that amount can be found in tonight's packet on the city website.
Alderman Bruno makes the motion to pay the bills as presented. Is there a second? Seconded by Alderman Ruby. Questions or comments? Seeing none, hearing none. Deputy clerk, please take the roll.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Radecki?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Seven-zero. Seven zero.
Dramatic coffee aye. Seven affirmative votes, three absent, the motion passes. We skip down to item 12A. 12A is to recommend resolution number 2018-72, authorizing the execution of a four-year collective bargaining agreement between the City of Geneva and the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, Streets Fleets Division, Local 196.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Marx, seconded by Bruno. Questions or comments regarding item 12A? Seeing none, hearing none. Madam Deputy Clerk, please take the roll.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Radecki?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Motion carries, seven zero.
Item 12B, as in boy, is to recommend ordinance number 2018-27, amending Title 11 zoning ordinance, Chapter 2, Section 11-2-2, definitions of words and terms, and Chapter 3, Section 11-3-12, wireless services of the Geneva City Code. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Alderman Marx?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Ruby. Ladies and gentlemen, this vote does require two-thirds. In essence, ladies and gentlemen, this vote requires all council members present this evening to vote aye in order to pass this legislation. Questions or comments? We have a consultant present this evening and of course we have our city attorney, Director Babica, city administrator, Mr. DeGroot.
I had a question.
Oh yes, Alderman Kilburg, forgive me. For the consultant?
Yeah.
If I could trouble you just to state your name and who you represent?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Elizabeth Harrington Smith. I am the city's consultant. I'm with Citiescape Consultants out of Boca Raton, Florida.
Alderman Kilburg.
I'd done some research and for full disclosure, the gentleman that was here, I forgot his name.
Anthony Lepore.
Right. Is he invested in the cellphone industry or, let me say the tower industry more specifically?
No, he is not.
He doesn't hold, he doesn't hold investments or ownership in, in cell towers?
No, he does not.
Okay, that's all I had, thank you.
Okay.
Anyone else on the dais? Alderman Bruno?
Just a quick confirmation as well, our Citiescape Consultants, our company, we, we consult exclusively to local government. So we don't, we don't, we only represent local government. We don't work with the wireless industry on anything except on behalf of our clients, which would be cities, counties, towns across the country.
Alderman Bruno?
Thank you, Mayor. I muscled my way through this ordinance, it is riveting, riveting stuff.
Yes.
Would you, I, I don't know that any of us here could truly critique the ordinance, but would you consider this a, a pretty boilerplate in terms of the, the types of protections and standards?
It is. As you know, the federal government, as well as the state at a state level, has taken away some of local governments' rights and so what this ordinance does is it walks you right up to the line of what you can do without crossing over it so that your city's protected from any type of litigation that might come from the wireless industry. So every protection is contemplated within this ordinance. There are some things that have changed within the ordinance from what you previously have had or are used to, but it is in response to state and local, and state and federal regulations. So it takes you right up to that line. So it's, there are a lot of protections, a lot of steps that have to be, that has, that the wireless industry to put up a new tower or any type of infrastructure has to go through before anything goes up in your community.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Forgive me. Anyone else on the dais? Questions for Ms. Harrington Smith? Alderman Kilburg?
You're prepared to comment on, on Title 11 as well?
Yes, that's what this is for.
Yes.
The, the Plan Commission discussed reducing the height of our, our cell towers?
Yes.
Last week. And they're proposing that we, we reduce the height to, to 500, or excuse me, 100 feet?
Right, that's correct. That's what's in there.
Do you have any history with other communities as they looked at, at reworking the reduction in height? It seems like this is pretty dramatic. In other words, we're looking at more than 50% reduction here, much more than 50%. Do you have any history with other communities as they're related to a similar ordinance as they reviewed and, and made modifications? This just, on the surface, it seems to be pretty dramatic. I understand our Plan Commission came forward with this recommendation and was unanimous, but your thoughts I would be interested in.
So the, the, typically what's happening, the trend right now for the industry is heights are coming down. Some of the smaller facilities, small cell wireless facilities as 5G is introduced. So some of the smaller facilities will be, you'll, you'll see that they may come up. I don't know how soon here it will, but across the country you'll see some of the more small wireless facilities, meaning shorter in height and, but the, the taller towel, towers, in your, in your code now, you have it at, for a concealed facility, 100 feet and for a non-concealed facility, 80 feet. So in order for the infrastructure to work, it has to get above ambient tree height or any obstructions that might be in the way. So that is, and we've seen trends across the country over the last few years that where the height is being somewhat reduced. There's, we haven't seen any, unless you're in a real rural community or emergency services towers where the real tall lattice towers, 200, 300 feet tall, we, I haven't seen that in the last several years of any new facility of that height coming about unless, like I said, it was a real rural community and more public safety, public services, emergency services type of tower.
So as far as municipalities, you're saying what, what we're proposing and, and planning to do here this evening would be consistent with other communities, municipalities? Did you have any experience in the Chicago metropolitan area with it?
We don't, we don't, we don't work within that area right now. Just in, looking throughout the area, I'm not sure what their height is. It doesn't look like they have a ton of regulation. There's a lot of non-concealed facilities when I looked around, so, so I'm not sure. But I, but for your community here, you don't have a lot of the skyscrapers where you would need a lot of height. You would need 80 to about 100 foot would really, that does open it up, keep it open for the wireless industry.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else on the dais? Alderman Ruby?
If this is off topic, just let me know. It seems the technology itself is a little premature on the release with the, how close these towers have to be put towards each other. What is your opinion on that?
Well, it, so what's happening is, you know, 5G is still in development. It has not settled down yet. So they're still working on what the infrastructure is really going to be, what, what the antennas are actually going to be. So we're seeing right now, we're seeing a lot of the, what happens is when you get a smaller facility that comes in and it's, it's 5G, it's to fill in for capacity. So, meaning that at 6 o'clock in one area, when everyone's at home and they're on their devices, some people may be kicked off the phone, some people may be kicked off a device, that sort of thing, that's a capacity issue. So what happens is the wireless industry will come in with additional infrastructure if it's, if there's enough of a business plan. So if there's enough of their subscribers in that area, they will need to beef up their infrastructure somehow. So what happens with the smaller facilities, they're shorter and closer together. So they're just, it's, it's just to fill in. They will still be tied to a big tower, what we call the macro facility or the macro tower, so they'll still be tied into those. Those won't go away. The smaller facilities will need to be shorter and closer together to fill in certain areas.
So on those, on the tails of that, what is your opinion on this in rural areas? Because I, I've read that they're, they're selling this as a, a great thing for rural areas and I've, I've read the exact opposite of that, that that'll never really happen.
Right. So what happens is the wireless industry will come into areas where there's demand, service demand. It's, it's, it's a business. So if there are multiple subscribers for that service and, and they put the demand on, on the company, they will come in. They will, that's, it's, it's just based on business. It's a business decision for them. So some of the rural communities are underserved for that reason. So a lot, we're seeing a lot of different communities, very rural communities, who are actually putting up their own towers and they're making agreements with broadband providers to provide internet services, if you will. So it's, the rural, you know, they had the broadband initiative that happened throughout the country, that federal money came down and it, it put a lot of money out there, but it didn't serve its purpose. It didn't get out to the rural community yet because the business plan, it's, it's a business plan, really, so. Okay, thank you. You're welcome.
Alderman Maladra?
So I just wanted to review a couple of things. A, if we did nothing, if we didn't pass this ordinance, this technology would still come if there were companies who wanted to put it here and there was demand, correct?
Yes.
So we can't stop it.
No.
Two, by enacting this ordinance, have we done anything that precludes us from taking action or, or having any benefit from action others might take against the state's legislation and if it gets overturned?
No. So this, the, the code, the, the ordinance that you're voting on tonight is, takes you compliant with the current regulations. So the ones that are, the, really the industry is pushing on the, on what you voted on before, which was Title 8, took away a lot more of your control, if you will, or ability to regulate. So this one really is more about the federal government. So it doesn't, it doesn't stop you
Yep, yep. Sorry.
At state level.
Yeah, thank you.
Anyone else on the dais? Anyone from the audience? Mr. Stapleton, how are you, sir?
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
Bob Stapleton. I am CEO of National Wireless and I'm also past president of the Illinois State Wireless Association and I was founder of that association. I've been involved with the wireless industry for probably 22 years and my family's been very much involved. My youngest son is my partner and my oldest son is a senior construction manager for AT&amp;T. I applaud you in taking the steps that you're doing with the ordinance. There's a lot going on. 5G is a, is a huge issue. In fact, I was battling with 5G all weekend. I was very much involved with Lollapalooza this past weekend downtown Chicago.
Were you performing, sir? Were you just attending?
No, I was, no, I was, we erected four temporary towers for Lollapalooza.
Wow.
Because it's a density factor.
Sure.
The more, the more people, the more things you compress in that, there's just a bigger demand. In fact, the, the interesting thing that came out of it, at times we couldn't push data through the system, but the voice network held up. It was very interesting because the voice network was at, was a lower spectrum, so it held up. But with the macro, meaning the big tall towers and of course the, what we call small cell, there's a great deal. I'm involved with the city of Chicago right now in doing small cell both on the light poles and on buildings within the, with what I want to call the private sector within the central business district. As we just keep switching over to wireless demand, there's, there's more access. We plan, based on the, the changes made in your ordinance, we plan on going ahead with our application for Stevens Street. We have two custom, we have two carriers that'd like to be there and so we're going to go forward with that application. And it's just, you know, there's, you've made your ordinance where we can work with it and, and I think in our discussion with, with staff, we have, we have a pretty good plan on how we can go about it. So I applaud you in making the, the steps going forward if you so approve the ordinance tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Yes, sir. Welcome back. Just a reminder that obviously the questions would be relevant to Chapter 11?
Understood, Your Honor.
As opposed to Chapter 8, as we discussed before. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Ladies and gentlemen of the council, thank you for hearing my comments. I just wanted to clarify something.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, yes. John Hunter, 919 Red Wing. I, I just, a point of clarification, are we referring to the height of the towers here that you're voting on or is it the setback from the nearest property? Because obviously there, you know, there's a difference there. So I'd like to get that clarified if possible.
Well, city, do you want me to, it's really both, it's a combination within the ramparts of the ordinance as propagated by the federal, but David, if you want to?
The, the Plan Commission's recommendation, the ordinance as it currently stands is there's a 500-foot setback requirement from residentially zoned properties. It contradicts another section of the code, we'll get into that, but that setback requirement is being eliminated and now the setback requirement is the height of the tower plus the minimum setback of the district it's located in, or 20 feet, whichever's greater. The height, there is no height parameters in our ordinance today. The maximum height allowed in any zoning district's 80 feet, so with the, the draft ordinance, it's 80 feet if it's not concealed, 100 feet if it is concealed.
Okay, and then just one last thing. So then you're not going to be voting on this tonight because you require a two-thirds majority or you will be?
We are going to vote on this tonight, sir. I would also remind the council and I would certainly remind you and anyone tuning in, if this evening's vote is less than two-thirds affirmative, this matter will be brought up at a special city council meeting next Monday night. If that fails yet again, it'll be brought up at the council meeting regularly scheduled for August 20th. As you know and everyone else knows, the window of opportunity to at least assume a modicum of control, that window is closing rapidly. And if we find ourselves in the unavilable position of voting this down or not voting at all, then I suspect that this council chamber will be filled with folks as we see construction taking place throughout the community.
Well, as I understand it, these, what you're voting on tonight has nothing to do with the state law and this was a voluntary change to your, to your zoning?
That's correct, sir, yes.
Okay.
This is the federal law that we're considering this evening, Chapter 11.
Right. Okay, then I, I won't take too much time. I didn't, you know, I don't want to waste the council's time, but I do have a couple of things that I'd like to say yet tonight.
Yes, sir.
First of all, I did a little looking on, on the wireless industry and just the four top companies. AT&amp;T's revenue 2017 is $160 billion. Verizon's revenue, $126 billion. T-Mobile came in at about $40 billion and Sprint about $33 billion. It's a very well-funded industry and it seems as though they've, through their lobbying efforts, were able to hamstring, hamstring this council's ability to govern the city with the best interests of its tax-paying residents at heart. And, and in addition, they've taken away the amount of revenue that you can extract from a given from a given application and subsequent contract for such. So it seems kind of odd to me that such a wealthy industry would be, you know, asking you to give up the revenue and to give them a break on the pricing and such as fee structure and so on. Seems very odd. So I already covered that and, but the fact that, you know, this was, you voluntarily decided to change these, the zoning to change the setback, as the councilman had mentioned, by quite a bit, from 500 to 100. Maybe 500 was a little excessive, but when I saw the map that Mr. DeGroot had created, it was really hard to make sense of that. And I had requested that perhaps we should, you know, get a map that shows our current infrastructure, what the wireless towers are now and what the setbacks are and, and then get an idea of what maybe the best of both worlds might be. So 500 might be too excessive, but I really think, in my opinion, 100 is way too close. I can throw a rock 100 feet and to, to have something like that close to your residents, I think would be not desirable for many of the tax-paying residents of Geneva. So this, you know, this, tonight's topic seems like it's just another gimme after already having to give up your revenue and your right of way and all of these other things for this industry. Simply, you know, this industry that, this is designed, so doing this seems as though it's been designed to prevent the bullying tactics of this industry as far as, you don't give us what we want, we, we might take legal action if we were treated unfairly. But in my opinion, it's the tax-paying residents of Geneva that are being treated unfairly. And what recourse do we have? So, and then just really quickly on, on the topic of health of the residents, I would like to draw an analogy with the organic food industry, which has a worldwide revenue of $90 billion. And the reason why that's such a big industry is that people are not convinced of the safety of GMO products. So they choose to err on the side of caution when it comes to their family's health, even though it might cost a little bit more overall. So there is an equal uncertainty with regard to the health effects of constant exposure to this form of man-made radiation that comes out of these towers and the small towers, which we're not going to discuss tonight. But the tall towers also, you know, emit a form of man-made radiation. And as we bring these things closer to people's homes, it's going to increase the level of exposure. So we, you know, I am urging the council to err on the side of caution here because, you know, if, if you're one of the residents who's unlucky enough to live adjacent to one of these commercial properties, one of these industrial properties, 100 feet is really, really close. And I think that as people become aware of, of what you're voting on tonight, that you might see a little more outrage than you do tonight. But that was all I had for tonight and thank you for your time. I appreciate your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Hunter. Alderman Bruno.
Thank you, Mayor. I was wondering if Ms. Harrington Smith, a quick question. So we are, we modified this to, to basically put us as close, give us as much control without being viol, in violation of, so do, do we have any latitude as a municipality to increase those setbacks?
So setbacks can't be just arbitrary. They have to be based on certain facts. And a setback is one part of your code. There are eight, nine, 10 things that come well before the setback. So it's just one small piece. It's, it's almost taking it out of context. As your setbacks are in your current code, it's as if you're standing in the way of deployment. So it leaves your city wide open. It, it leaves it wide open. So what we did was we took everything into consideration, all the steps that need to be taken, including setbacks, and we did increase it based on planning commission's recommendation and taking a look at the technology that's out there. But you can't just arbitrarily pick a number and say, okay, we want it to be this. So it needs to be based on facts, which is what we did. We took the, the height of the tower. So it's all based on, if there is a basis, a defensible basis for public safety behind it.
Thank you.
Alderman Kilberg. I guess maybe I misspoke earlier. I was, I meant setbacks is what I was referring to initially. And, and it seemed like you were referring to towers with your explanation height.
Oh, sorry.
I guess I was asking then, have you seen communities then that have moved from 500 feet to 100 feet as far as setbacks, similar to what we're, we're entertaining here this evening?
Yes. Again, if you, again, the, the setback is based on, it's based on, it can't be arbitrary. So that's why we went by.
Well, 100 feet could be arbit, could, could be argued as arbitrary.
Not, no, it's based on the height of the tower. So, so that's, or it's the underlying zoning district as well. So it's based on, that's what it's, the basis on. So, and if you look at what 500 feet means for your community, it means there's maybe one sliver that they can even put a tower, which in essence means you're violating the Telecommunications Act of 1996 and you're standing in the way of deployment.
I guess, I guess, if you look at the map that shows availability to place a tower within 500 feet within the city of Geneva, essentially there isn't any place you can put one.
Right, right.
But do we know where you could place one at 400 feet, 300 feet, or 200 feet? Because I think that's the unanswered question. I think that's what this gentleman was trying to, to hint at is, is that, that why is 100 feet where we need to go? And the plant commission, I understand what they said is, is that we have the latitude to increase that setback at some point in time in the future if we, if, if the council, if the community opt to. Is, is that correct?
You can change your code any time you want to, absolutely. And if you find there's something in it that isn't working based on applications coming in and based on implementation of the code, absolutely, you can make any change you want to. But again, you're looking at, you need to, it to be defensible. So, so we took the code and we made sure that it, there are a lot of different protections in place, not just setbacks, is just, that's one piece of it. So there's like eight, nine other things that has, has to happen before, it's not like just, okay, now we're taking this footprint, we're changing it to this small footprint, you're going to now just see towers proliferating everywhere. That's, that's not the case. So it's, I, it's scary, it sounds scarier because you're taking a 500-foot down to 100-foot in essence. So it sounds scarier than it is in actuality because there are a lot more things that they have to do. So the wireless industry, before they decide where they're going to put up a tower, they do a propagation to see where they need the tower. So if they're in an area, there's a need here, but they can't go there, the city's standing in the way of deployment. So that's why we, that's why the discussion came to shorten up the setbacks.
Yeah. I'm just saying though, if you went from 500 feet to 200 feet and if you were in a court of law, I would think that our intent was correct. And not going the additional 100 feet, it could be argued, I think that we would have a defensible position there.
Well, I think what happens there is it's just an arbitrary number. It's not based on the, the height of the tower or underlying zoning districts. So that's, I think that's what would get the city into trouble if, if that were the case. So it's just.
So you're saying that once we establish 100 feet, we probably can't increase that setback if we wanted to without?
Well, and it's.
Wouldn't that be more difficult to reverse? And wouldn't you be at, at a greater risk? I, I guess if we, if we reduce the setback from, let's say, from 500 feet to 200 feet, how much more of Geneva would be available?
I, I don't know that answer, but.
Don't you think that would be a good, good, good piece of information?
David, I'm going to ask if I may. Talk a little bit about the telecommuni, this is going to be a heck of a statement. Tell, talk a little bit about the Telecommunications Act of 1996, our zoning laws, how we are forced by federal legislation to say nothing of state legislation, to somehow marry these two so that we're not accused of blocking deployment. And I think most of us on the council and those tuning in can recall very fondly when our friends at a company I won't mention, but it has three letters, deployed what they called light speed. And we all were apoplectic regarding the potentiality of these ugly boxes being put out there, yet we had no say in the matter because our zoning allowed for such deployment and we couldn't arbitrarily deny such zoning. So can you address that a little bit and?
Some of it, maybe.
Okay.
Others, I might defer. I think our, our current zoning ordinance is exclusionary. When you look at the map, it, it wipes out all but slivers of, of certain pieces of property. That combined with the lack of height parameters, we only allow a tower to be 80 feet without seeking a variation from the zoning board of appeals is another exclusionary layer that would not hold up if challenged. Because there's no real basis for, for those requirements. The contradictory language I referred to earlier is also problematic because we currently actually do allow them in residential districts. And if it's located in a residential district, like our parks are zoned residential, cemeteries are zoned residential, golf courses, then it only has to be setback 100 feet. But if it's located in commercial or industrial, then it's a 500-foot buffer from residential districts. It, it doesn't make sense. So part of the effort here was to come up with a defensible setback requirement that was applicable throughout the city. So that's, that's where we came up with the height of the, the tower plus the district setback in which it's located, but in no case less than 20 feet. 20 feet in addition to the height of the tower.
Right. So if the height of the tower is 72 feet?
The setback is 72 plus 20.
Plus 20, correct.
Or 40 if the setback's in that district is 40.
Exactly. Alderman Kilberg, the floor is yours again. Excuse me.
Well, okay. What were the issues involved with setback as relates to the Stevenson issue when, when we had that hearing?
I, I don't recall the exact difference, but I think they were.
It was the industrial issue though, it was a 500-foot and they were asking a variance on, right?
Right. They're in an industrial district and it was located with, within 200 feet, I think, of a residential district.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the dais?
I'll ask.
Alderman Maladra.
Okay. So, so this use of tower height and setback in the zoning district, this is common, this is not something that is unique to us, this is?
No. This is very common and it's honestly, it's, it is one of the more restrictive that we've seen as well. So again, the setback issue is, is really just one piece of it. So there are a lot of other things that have to happen before you even, that is considered as well. So that, you know, and it was based on the needs of, and the desires of the city too. So it, it absolutely is. If you go, if you do pick an arbitrary number, you do open yourself up to it, issues with deployment. And it's based on, it, and it's, it's not, they don't just pick a random spot, they pick it based on need. And so if they had, and they have to substantiate this need. So if there's not a need, then that's it. So it is, there's a lot of different steps as well that's involved in it.
And so the way it is currently, if they felt there was a need and our current code was arbitrary, they could just force the issue by, what, taking us to court?
Yes.
Okay.
In essence, we would be accused as a municipality of de facto redlining and their ability to deploy services.
That's right.
To a community that wants that service, but because we didn't want it as a community or a city, we'd be denying those residents that service should they so demand it.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Anyone from the dais?
Do you feel that we're going to need that information as relates to areas of accessibility in the city of Geneva at some point in time in the future?
I, I don't, I'm sorry, say that, I don't understand the question.
In other words, the map essentially says that there isn't any place that we could zone a tower today.
Correct.
In other words, at some point in time, do you feel as though we're going to need that information when, when telecommunications, telecommunications industry comes to Geneva and asks where they might be able to site a tower? How does that flow?
So what happens is when they make an application, there are a lot of requirements within the new code, the proposed code that's for vote tonight, that has to be shown to, to show the need so that the map is not necessarily what you need. It's all the different steps for that. There's different, the different sighting preferences, the hierarchy of preferences. They have to go through all of those preferences and say why those are not feasible in order to get down to whatever it is, whatever type of tower they're proposing for a new tower. So co-location is encouraged. That's one of the higher, the higher citing, citing hierarchies. So that's above a new tower. So they have to, there's a lot of things that they have to demonstrate before they get down to a new tower. Height has to be justified and it's all based on engineering. So you could say, if you have an area and it's like, okay, you can't go into this half of, the east half of the city, you can't go in that area because if you're residential, you're standing in the way of deployment if that's where it's needed.
One last question. How to the, the, our city water towers that currently have telecommunications?
Yes.
Fixtures on them, how does that come into play as relates to this ordinance?
Those are a priority. So those are listed as a priority site in your code.
Do they fall into the same ordinance regs?
We put in.
In other words, Senator?
The way it's structured is that if you co-locate on an existing tower, you don't have to go through the special use process. But if you're trying to establish a new facility, whether it's a tower or something smaller, you have to go through the special use process and then you have to go through that hierarchy of preferred locations and demonstrate why each one of the ones above you on the list does, does not meet the needs. So co-location is, is strongly encouraged by eliminating that special use requirement.
So how does that relate to our water towers and, and the fixtures that are currently on our water towers?
So if, if you're able to locate on those fixtures, you don't have to go through the special use process.
Okay. Do we have further accessibility on those towers or on our water towers?
That would be something that we would need to take a look at, but it, just at a glance, we haven't done an in-depth study on them, but there is space available up there. It's just a matter of looking at it from an engineering perspective. So whoever comes in, makes an application, an engineering study goes into the application. It's not just, okay, does this meet this, 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 this? There is, there is a science behind it, so.
So in other words, if we had, obviously we control the water tower and if we have an application, can we defer them potentially to our water towers as a first, first option?
It depends on where they're looking to deploy. So, so for example, right, so if they're, if, say it's Verizon and Verizon's not on there and that's within what they call a search ring or a search area, so the wireless industry will, they'll send out, they'll put out a search ring or a search area and anything within this area will work. And so the water towers are a priority. So if the water towers fall within that search area, the industry, whoever is making the application, the applicant would have to show why they can't use that facility first and foremost. So it depends where this, where they're looking for service, so where the search ring is issued.
And relating to that, obviously the city benefits, there's revenue generated from the placement of those, those, those fixtures on our towers.
That's correct.
Do you expect that we're going to see a, a depression? Do you expect that we're going to see a depression in the, as we renegotiate those contracts at some point in time, do you feel that the amount of revenue that we're going to be able to generate is going to be reduced as a result of some of the things that we're, some of the actions that were taking place right this evening here?
Oh, no, not at all. It won't affect the revenue of what goes on there. As the land owner, as the landowner, property owner, you actually have more rights as, than you do a municipality.
You say we have more leverage.
You do, because you're the property owner. So property owners have more rights, if you will, as the landowner. Now, you can't, you have to be fair market value, but it is, so it won't, it won't decrease, but this code will not, actually, it may increase, because it is listed as a priority.
Okay. Thank you.
Alderman Ruby.
So regarding the setback, you've made it clear, it can't be arbitrary.
Right.
Is there a setback determination in writing? Like, is this, this is federal law?
Well, it's, it's, there isn't any, there isn't a general, okay, your setback has to be this, or can only be this. It is based on the law of physics, based on tower height, based on underlying zoning areas. So that is what typically setbacks are based on. If they're just an arbitrary number, you open yourself up and you leave yourself vulnerable.
Okay. It's still, it still feels a little arbitrary from your explanation of how we get to that number. So I was just curious, what, if there's a clear definition in print?
There's not. I mean, there's, there is not specifically, but it is across the board, what's universally accepted is typically 110% of the tower height, which is how it's written.
Okay. And where's, where's that written?
In your code, in the proposed code.
Oh, okay, in our code.
In your code.
But where did we get that number?
Well, it's, I mean, it is one of those that's based on the wireless industry, and, you know, you can probably tell you, too, you've, in every code that's across the country that we've seen, too.
To just kind of add on to that, it's, I can, I think I understand where you think it comes across as arbitrary, just to pick that number.
Sure.
It's related to safety, so should the tower fail, it's contained within the property it's located on.
Okay.
So I think that's, that's part of why that number's been used.
Okay, thank you. And as far as 5G devices, are they currently on the market? I'm sorry. The 5G devices. I assume that the 5G technology is only compatible with 5G devices?
So 5G is based on speed. It's based on the speed of the devices. So-
Okay.
It's five gigahertz, gigabytes, giga-
So we don't all-
Gigahertz.
Gigahertz.
Okay. So we don't all have to buy new cellphones to take advantage of the 5G technology, or do we?
Say that again, I'm sorry.
Do we need to buy a new iPhone to take advantage of this technology?
Well, technology is evolving constantly. So, you know, you'll, you'll notice that your battery, your phone wasn't keeping a charge. So it's constantly evolving. And so the technology, you know, the wireless industry, the providers out there are constantly upgrading their equipment to be faster, to, because there's more demand. We want faster service, we don't like waiting. So as the 5G is deployed, you'll see that it's for fill-in, it's for fast service. And so technically, there's not really 5G yet, but it's, it's there. They're still developing it, and you're going to see it continue to develop. So we're seeing a lot, we're seeing a lot of the small cell facilities that are designed for this 5G, this next wave of technology.
So the cellphones that we all have right now?
Yeah.
Can they operate on the 5G towers?
I don't know. There isn't one yet.
Okay.
There's not a 5G tower necessarily. So it will start to evolve. So every now and again, you'll see that your phone needs an update. So that's what they're doing constantly. They're update, the phones are updating according to the technology in the area. So-
Okay.
But chances are, you'll need a new phone.
Right. Okay, I, yeah, I was just curious about, okay, thank you.
So Alderman Ruby, if you have a flip phone, now's the chance.
So I will say, just kind of as an overall, you're, you have a very strong code. This new proposed code that you're voting on tonight is a very strong code. It affords you the maximum protections that you are allowed by federal law. So it is, it doesn't leave you open, it takes you right up to that line of things that you can ask for, and it is a very strong code. So I feel very comfortable, even with taking the setbacks the way they are, down to what they are now, as proposed, I think you do have a very strong code for your city.
Anyone else from the dais? We have a motion, we have a second. Madam Deputy Clerk, please take the roll call.
Maladra?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Radecki?
Aye.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Ruby?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
The motion passes with seven affirmative votes and three absent. We are, new business and public comment. Anyone from the dais, new business? From the audience, any public comment or new business for the benefit of the council or community tuning in? For those who were not paying full attention last week, to my right is Father, second time around. Please share with us the details of Ethan, because, you know, when I texted you congratulations, all I got was thanks. Height, weight, anything like that.
I-
Height, I shouldn't say height. Length and weight, sorry.
So last, last Monday evening at, I believe it was 6:53, almost, almost city council meeting time.
So you could have been here, really.
I was thinking about it. I just, I was worried about traffic. But almost right at city council meeting time, my wife and I welcomed our second son into the world. His name is Ethan Owen McCready. And we, in fact, part of it was promoting our son Everett to big brother, so that was a big part of the day, too. So he's big brother now, and we have, he's officially one week old as of, as of now, at this time. So just a little over 21 and a half inches long, full head of hair, and mother is resting and recovering well at home, and our son is still in the, trying to figure out where he is now phase. So, but it's, it's going well, so.
Lasts about 20 years, I think, doesn't it?
I think so. I think so.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
That's awesome. If there's no other new business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion by Marx, seconded by Ruby. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone to pose? We are adjourned, ladies and gentlemen.